Called order the council meeting of the East Grand Forks City Council for Tuesday, April 19th, 2022. Would the city clerk please take roll call?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead. Council Vice President Tim Reapell.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Seeing the quorum, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, it's an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred by staff or board and commissions for research or future council agendas if appropriate. Anyone have any questions not on the agenda? Seeing none. Approval of minutes, consider approving the minutes of the council meeting for East Grand Forks, Minnesota Council of April 5th, 2022.
Move.
Moved by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Schedule bid letting, none. Schedule public hearings, public hearing to consider requests for special use permit for an asphalt plant and final plat.
Move for an open hearing.
Second.
Moved by Johnson, second by Vedder. We are now open.
Can I get a vote on the?
You want to get a roll on that?
Yes, or just all in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Unimposed? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Last Thursday, the planning commission heard and held their own public hearing for a special use permit to operate, construct and operate an asphalt plant and then final approval of some land that was recently annexed into city limits located just east of Crystal Sugar, west of Highway 2, and north of County Road 17, currently owned by the Enright Brothers, purchase agreement by Zaverills. Just to move forward quickly, at the public hearing, the planning commission recommended approval of the SUP with any such conditions being set by city council. So I'll just quickly go through my report and then we'll open it up for either comment from the applicant, plant operator, and then the public, and we'll go from there. Just so you're aware, special use permits are permits that require a vote from the council. It's special to the zone that it's located in, which is asphalt would be, it would be special to the industrial park, it's not a permitted use. And we can place any and all such conditions that that permit would have to follow if approved. Any such violation of that condition, then that permit would become null and void. So, to summarize the application proposals, Zaverills and Sons are applying for a special use to construct and operate a plant just west of Highway 2, east of American Crystal Sugar, north of County Road 17. All of this is in the report in the packet. The asphalt plant consists of feeder bins that are filled with aggregate materials, there are aggregate piles, there will be not, there will be no concrete crushing on site. However, those aggregate materials will be heated and mixed in the drums. The baghouse will collect dust from the material, it also scrubs and cleans as it is sent through. A burner and an AC heater is used to heat the materials into asphalt. A generator powers such items. A conveyor for the asphalt material will be dispersed into trucks, as well as they will have other types of equipment, aggregate stockpiles, propane and fuel tanks, an AC tank, and tack tanks. This is a very simplified version of how an asphalt plant works. If you have any additional questions, feel free to ask the applicant or the plant manager. It runs in a very limited time of the year. Their application requests mid-May to October, and then it also runs when they're actively making the product itself. So it's not like a typical manufacturing plant where it operates six days a week over the course of a year, limited periods of time. It only operates when they have a job and it's needed. So, a busier year, and this would be with a very large operation, would be around 45 days out of those months. Typically, they average at their other asphalt plants between 20 and 25, and that's on a high. The highest amount of trucks to and from the site when it is in operation would be approximately, I mean, and at the very high end would be 30 trucks. I've found based on visiting with other asphalt plants that this is a very high number, but it does equate to about one truck every two minutes. Average daily traffic would be a little over 600 trucks. So, the access to the site for the trucks will be either from County Road 17 heading north, or there is an additional access which is on the north end of the property that would access out onto Highway 2. And a majority of our emergency services would be using that access point because that's where the retention basin would be placed for the dry hydrant and the water that's needed for any type of fire services that are out there. Both roads and accesses can handle such traffic. I visited with both the county engineer and the state engineer for MINDOT. They saw no concerns with the amount of truck traffic, and they did not feel that it would be anything that would require any additional type of service, looking at additional lanes, those types of things. One thing the county did look at, if the plant were in operation and approved, they would possibly look at a right turn lane leading north into the property so that we could remove the trucks from stacking on County Road 17. Utilities will be limited. Right now, no water is needed, no sanitary. Electrical is going to be operated with a generator. However, it may be requested that we add city service if we obtain territory, as that would reduce the amount of noise from the generator. All asphalt plants are regulated, permitted, and monitored by both the MPCA, which is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and the EPA. There are three permits that they must obtain, one being the urban industrial, excuse me, the non-metallic mining and associated activities general permit, a national pollutant discharge elimination systems permit, and an air emissions registration permit. The air emissions registration permits through the EPA, the other two are through the MPCA. All permits have detailed requirements, they require detailed monitoring and reporting, they are reviewed and enforced by those staff of those agencies. This is not something that the city would be capable of monitoring or reviewing, however, they do have requirements set for that. They do have to report and monitor annually. So, the planning commission city council must consider how the proposed special use permit would comply with each of the following city standards. The use is not creating an excessive burden on public facilities and utilities which they serve or propose to serve in the area. The use will be sufficiently compatible with or separated by sufficient distance from or screened from adjacent land uses so that there will be no deterrence to the use or development of any adjacent land uses. And so screening, those types of things would be one such condition if you so choose, if you did not feel that they meet that. Each structure improvement is so designed and constructed that is not in sightly in appearance, to that extent that it will hinder the orderly and harmonious development of the district wherein proposed. So the district that you're considering is the industrial district. So when you're looking at the type of structure improvements that are added, must be considered with what is similar to at an industrial area. The use is consistent with the purposes of our city code 152, the purposes of the zoning district and when the applicant intends to locate it. So it is consistent at this point in time because it is allowed as a conditional use in the industrial district. The use is not in conflict with the East Grand Forks land use plan, it is not. We recently adopted a 2050 land use plan. This area is so designated to be brought in as industrial because it is contiguous with our limited industrial district as well as our general industrial district. Adequate measures have been taken to provide ingress and egress, which we have discussed as the two separate entrances and exits. It will minimize traffic congestion, provide adequate access to public roads, and sufficient onsite parking, which they do have a truck staging area set in their supplemental information if you look at their site layout. The last one, no buildings, structures, or, excuse me, all buildings and structures must meet the intent of the state building code and/or fire codes. That's something that's already required. We would make sure that they do meet both state building code and fire codes. And then there are additional potential effects or impacts that we can look at to address when it comes to public facilities, utilities, and those are considering streets, law enforcement, ambulance, emergency service, fire protection, any schools within the location, utilities. Based on the crow flies, the closest school is approximately 1.4 miles away, that would be South Point. The next closest would be Riverview Christian, or, excuse me, Riverside Christian. And then lastly, if you do approve, you do have to set conditions on it, such as things that maybe aren't addressed, noise, odor, hours of operation, and again, odor could be subjective because what may bother me in terms of an odor or noise may be something that is different to someone else. But those are, those are things that can be monitored and can be addressed if adequately worded in the conditional use permit. I also contacted a number of different agencies. As I said, I contacted both the state and the county engineer, I contacted the city of Grand Forks. City of Grand Forks currently has two asphalt plants within their city limits, OP has one and STRATA. The city of Grand Forks has not received any complaints regarding the operation, the smell, the noise of those asphalt plants. I contacted UND, they recently built a medical facility which is within 500 to 600 feet of the OP asphalt plant. They have received no complaints from faculty, staff, any of the students. I contacted Crystal Sugar, I visited with Lloyd Kennedy, who is the plant operator, and then he visited with corporate, and they did not feel that they would see any impacts that this asphalt plant would have, nor do they have any concerns with it impeding truck traffic with their fall campaign. I, I think I covered everything that I covered in the planning commission. If you have any other questions of me, feel free to ask me during this point of view, or during this public hearing. Other than that, everyone has been provided the supplemental information from the Zaverills. You have been provided all public comment from the planning commission meeting last Thursday. You have been provided with the Huntsville Township comments, both that we received last Thursday as well as comments yesterday. I put together a report based on all the conversations that I've had with those extra agencies, so if anybody has anything from me, I will sit back and let you start receiving public comment and applicant comment. Thank you.
Thanks Nancy.
If you have any comments, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Zach Boe with RJ Zaverill &amp; Sons. Just want to get in front of you guys and ask if there's any additional questions to supplemental use package we put together. If they come up along the way, please reach out, ask the question, we're here to address it. We brought multiple staff members here obviously today to answer different varying questions that may come up throughout the process, about the plant operation, about other conditions and monitoring permits that are required like Nancy alluded to. If there's any specifics to any of those, please reach out and we'll, we'll step forward and address as needed. But otherwise, I believe we put together most of our information in the supplemental use package. Anything else comes up, let us know. Thank you.
I do have one question for you.
Yep.
Before you walk away. A lot of people have contacted me, one of the first things that comes up, they always ask, and I'm sure that you've looked at this, I'm looking for an answer, so when people ask me again. You own property just east of there, used to be a dump ground, I don't know, I think it's still gravel pit or something. Everyone always asks, why don't they just put it out there? Do you have an answer for that question?
Biggest concern there is, is space. Obviously with some of the comments before, at other location, it was space and access to this location. This site, as Nancy alluded to, allows us to have a staging area for traffic, allows us to have a better access away from water resources like it was concerned by the river. Obviously, the Cooley runs right through beside that location as well. It, it gives us a better job, allows us to better set up this site for more of a permanent site, you know, as we go along.
Question for you Zach, on the, on the generator power and then the potential for a transition to permanent power. I've had a few residents reach out to me with concerns about noise and smell. I guess this question is related to, to noise. What would be the plan if this plant was to go into place to transition from generator power, which I'd assume is noisier, to a permanent power quieter option?
Our goal, as we just kind of discussed with city staff, was, obviously they got to get jurisdiction for providing the power, but soon after that, we would like to be converted over to city power to reduce that noise volume, and it just provides us more reliability, obviously from that aspect of, of the site as well. So, yes, it would like to be done as soon as we could, so. Thank you.
If I may, address that just briefly. Now that the annexation has been completed, I'm working with Water and Light and PKM to address that territory issue. We've already got a, an agreement, a territory transfer agreement in place with PKM, so now it's just a matter of, of negotiating a final document and transfer of that property. Once we have that, we'll be more than capable and willing and to, to get permanent power out there upon request.
I have a question. Maybe it's been answered, but I know it was raised also for the plant around St. Elara Thief River, does that continue on, or will that one be discontinued?
There's been discussion internally on that. That answer hasn't been 100%, answered. There's a potential to relocate that plant, but obviously that plant is serving a general area as well in that location. So this site provides us a secondary option for this area to provide service in this area as well, so.
Be determined.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else comes up, let me know. Thank you.
My name is Rob Raymond, I live at 17702 429th Avenue Southwest. We all know what's going on here. Zaverills tried to get a permit through Polk County to have this plant built several miles from East Grand Forks, would have been south of ways for their location is that they're trying now. But it was unanimously voted down due to concerns by neighboring residents, farmers, businesses in close proximity. Of course, now they've got the land annexed in East Grand Forks. You will find out as more people speak, not everything is regulated, and the information that the Zaverills have brought is not all quite right. There's a lot of things that we are concerned about where we live, air quality, smell, noise, property values, the research and the data we have. Property losses for homes near an asphalt plant averaged from 15% to 30% and as high as 56%. Asphalt plants can never safely coexist next to neighborhoods and schools. Zaverills' number one salesperson over there had mentioned that they're one point whatever miles from the nearest school, which on certain days, you will smell. I mean, you've got hydrogen sulfide, you've got the benzene chromium formaldehyde, the list goes on and on and on with the chemicals that are in these. They mentioned the concrete crushing. Concrete and asphalt are two different things. I was in the concrete business for almost 30 years. Crushing concrete doesn't smell, it might be a little dusty. We have been going to these planning and zoning committee meetings, county hearings, township meetings, planning and zoning here in East Grand Forks and Crookston, city council meetings. You know, when we were at this, this planning and zoning committee hearing the other day, John Zavro got up and said, the only issue we have is the people behind us, these people here. Well, that's us, the people with concerns. And all they do, you get the smug look and you get this and you get that, they don't care about aesthetics when you first drive into East Grand Forks, because that's what you're going to see. Also at this planning and zoning committee hearing, they didn't have a plan yet for a building. They didn't know if they were going to move the old stuff from the Thief River Falls plant here, or if they were going to build new. I would think a plan would be good for one thing, for starts. I can remember going through county commission hearings when our neighbors at Stable Days Youth Ranch were coming up. The commission, the council, were all 100% behind Stable Days. It's a great thing, people will use the property now, it's a great deal for kids, we all agree on that. Now let's just plant an asphalt plant right down the road from it, let's see all the kids and the horses and everything like that. You guys all had the information and the data before the annexation hearing. I don't know if anybody read it or not. With the, the vibe I got, I, I can't see it did or didn't, but I don't think so. Of course, RJ Zaverills have done a lot for East Grand Forks, and I'm sure they'll do a lot more for East Grand Forks. But read into the history of the company, there's like 1.7 million reasons you could maybe find that there could be something going on. These endorsement letters, I talked to people that work at OP Construction at the asphalt plant, they don't do up to even 10 trucks an hour. I said, do you do 10 trucks, 20 trucks? He's, oh gosh, no, we don't do anything that size. It's kind of like comparing apples to oranges. I tried to call one phone number that was listed on these endorsement letters, it was a non-working phone number. I've also heard that a lot of these people didn't realize what they were even signing. You will get complaints if this goes through, I mean, there's no doubt about it. You know, you got elected to serve the residents, and it, it seems to us, a lot of us, that you're just serving one company. We're just asking, at least put it off. Summer is way too short, the way it is around here. We get a couple of months a year to enjoy time on our deck, in our yards. Getting 20, 30 trucks, truck every two minutes or whatever, that's just, that's too much. These guys can build this thing anywhere they want. Why do we need it? Again, comparing it to Grand Forks side is, it's a completely different deal. I mean, they're so small, you don't even notice if a truck goes in and out of there. You're going to notice 30 trucks an hour. So again, we ask you to please do not let this go through, please. Thank you.
I'm Rob Raymond, I live at the same address that Rob lives at. When we first found out about this, I started doing some homework on this. I, I'm a research scientist, I've been, over 20 years, I've been looking, my, my work is involved, is looking at air particulates and environmental toxins on human health. I'm a biochemist, for 15 years, over 15 years, I worked for the EERC. So I'm very well familiar with the control mechanisms, the different types of particulates, and a lot of the studies that are out there. I never did any work with asphalt plants, but when I heard about this, I wanted to start looking into it and finding out. So I started doing my homework, and it was very alarming. Now I know Nancy said that she had talked to some companies, and I did too. After I started looking into this a little bit more, I contacted several companies and in fact, or agencies, and a lot of them I talked to numerous times. These include USDA, Soil and Water Conservation, EPA, Minnesota FEMA, the Minnesota Pollution Control, Minnesota State Farm Office, Polk County State Farm Office, the Federal Farm Program Office, the Center for Health and Environmental Justice, and a few others. These agencies tried to be as helpful as they could, almost every single one of them, and, and some of them, I talked to several people within each agency, and almost every single one of these people that I talked to said, boy, you have absolutely every one right to be concerned. I would also be concerned if an asphalt plant was coming, going to be built in my neighborhood or even that close to town. But there's a lot of unanswered questions, and we expect a lot of those unanswered questions will probably arise if this location is approved. So, I know I'm going to, I've got kind of a lot to say here, I'll try and get through it very quickly, but mostly what I want to talk about are the health effects. Like I said, I started to look into this, and the health effects to me are quite alarming. Overall, asphalt plants release harmful airborne particulates, they're hazardous health. The fumes cause or exacerbate respiratory ailments, cancer, liver damage, neurological problems, skin irritation, headaches, nausea. There is a survey that showed that 45% of residents living within a half a mile of an asphalt plant reported a deterioration of their health is right after it was built. Last week, at the county meeting, Mr. Alter Peter, who lives right across the street of where this proposed plant would be built, he expressed some of his concerns about some of these health issues, he's, and rightfully so. At that time, Ms. Ellis, the city planner, she asked him where he got his information, and Mr. Alter Peter handed her a paper and stated that it's all over the internet and that he had read several things about it. But Ms. Ellis looked it over and stated that the paper was from Arabic University that she had never heard of, and basically dismissed it by saying, well, you can find all kinds of things on the internet. Well, I, that's where I got a lot of my information too. But I got my information from places that I think that most of you have heard from, including the EPA, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, the NIH, and some of the other agencies. The EPA and these other organizations list several specific toxins of concern because of the health effects. When they do this, they, they use this information, it's compiled from peer-reviewed research articles, research studies that are published in medical journals, and they're from all over the world. Most of these publications can be found on PubMed, it's a search engine that is under the National Library of Medicine, and I want to read some of the summaries of some of these toxins. First off, hydrogen sulfide, or as we normally see it, like in there, it would be considered the SOX, because there's a few different types. Exposures to high concentrations may result in respiratory distress, pulmonary edema, nervous system depression, neurobehavioral effects, tissue hypoxia, cardiovascular effects, unconsciousness, and death. Exposure to lower concentrations can result in less severe neurological and respiratory effects such as incoordination, loss of smell, nasal symptoms, sore throat, cough, dyspnea, meaning trouble breathing. Individuals have reported permanent or persistent neurological effects including headache, poor concentration ability, and tension span, impaired short memory and motor function. One of the things I want to explain on one of these, I just did, just to verify that these studies, they are real, they are out there. When you look on PubMed, there's all different types of ways you can search it. I did the very minimal, I put in the term of the toxin, and I narrowed it down so it would have to be in the title or in the abstract, so that these are specifically about that. For hydrogen sulfide, when I put that in there, it came up with 63,826 articles. I then narrowed it down to put the hydrogen sulfide in with the term emissions, and it still has to be within the abstract or the title. I still got 2,082 studies. Some of the other ones, benzene. Benzene, it's a known carcinogen, it's a cancer-causing agent. Brief exposures to high levels can result in death, we don't expect that to happen, but lower levels cause drowsiness, dizziness, rapid heart, headache, tumors, confusion, and consciousness. It can lead to anemia, excessive bleeding, and it can be harmful to the immune system. It's also harmful to the human reproductive system, it can pass from the mother's blood to the fetus. Studies on animals have shown that breathing benzene was, was definitely harmful to the fetus, low birth weight, delayed bone formation, and bone marrow damage. Did another search same way, 41,332 studies that are, that are looking into this. Benzene emission, 2,453 popped up. Formaldehyde, formaldehyde is another one that is specific to asphalt plants. It's another cancer-causing agent. Eye, skin, respiratory tract irritant, inhalation of vapors can be narrowing of the bronchi, accumulation of fluid in the lungs. Inhalation of vapors can be narrowing of the bronchi, accumulation of fluid in the lungs. Children may be more susceptible than adults. Even fairly low concentrations can produce rapid onset for children in their nose, their throat, causing cough, chest pain, shortness of breath, and wheezing. Significant inflammation in the lower respiratory tract resulting in swelling of the throat, inflammation of the windpipe, the bronchi, narrowing of the bronchi, inflammation of the lungs, and accumulation of fluid in the lungs. 22,969 articles. 1,130 related to emissions. Polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, that's a group of over 100 different chemicals. What happens, these can be attached to dust particles, and so they can enter the water through discharges, they can enter the water through wastewater treatment plants, and then they can move into the soil, and they can contaminate groundwater. There's a lot of different information. Just to give you an idea, put in polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, 479,542 research articles looking at this stuff. When you look at, narrow it down with emissions, 8,764. Cadmium, that's another one. I mean, these just go on and on. We're talking about cancer, talking lung cancer, liver damage, changes in the immune system, reproductive problems, babies are born with birth defects, reduced body weights, behavioral problems, learning disabilities. Studies show, another 58,188. Studies showing on cadmium with emissions, 2,997. And these terms are just loose terms. I could have put in all kinds of different terms and gotten more. Arsenic, same type of thing. It gets onto the dust particles. They can, they attach, they can stay in the air for many days and travel long distances. They end up in the soil or sediment. Children are exposed by eating, they're playing in the dirt. They can be eating the dirt. They have more contact with it. So children are especially at risk. The arsenic, the dust particles can settle into the lungs and cause major problems. 45,453 articles talking about the health effects of arsenic. 1,315 due to emissions.
I hate to interrupt you. I've got a question for you. You've got a lot of stats there, and your background is pretty extensive, and I trust your judgment. So with all these possible chemicals that could get in the air, do you have a recommendation on some sort of a monitoring system that we could require?
I will get to that in just one minute. I do want to talk about that.
Okay, I'll start my clock.
Okay. Yeah, the particular matters, another one that's, you know, really bad, 163,000. So I just, the whole point that I'm saying on that, I mean, not all of these are going to be studies that are going, you know, that are going to be directly related with specific health. It can be, a lot of them are going to be, you know, more than one showing the same thing. But the point is, is that this stuff is not something that you just find off of the internet. These toxins are real, and they have been studied. The mechanisms are known, they have been monitored, and this is what regulations are based off of. Getting to what you wanted to say. I looked at the paperwork that was given to you regarding the emissions, because Zaverell's have said that, you know, they're, they would be monitored by Minnesota Pollution Control, and that they have to go through the permits, and that they have to do a lot of monitoring. And yes, that's very true. They also gave a graph, and I know you all have this, where if you look at it, it shows that for most of the toxins that they have to monitor, a lot of these don't have to be monitored, but for most of them, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency says that the upper limit that they're allowed to emit is 50 tons per year. And if you look through, they give their emission levels from 2020 and 2021, and at first glance, they look very low. You're talking, you know, eight tons, 11 tons, you know, down to less than one ton. But that's also per year. They also supplied a graph that shows how many days they were in operation. 2012, they had 16 days of operation, and 2021, they had 12 days. So those are how much they emitted in those 12 days. Well, if you do the calculations, which I did, and I have a copy here for all of you, if you extrapolate that out to say if they were in, if they were running this for 365 days, which is what the MPCA is stating, it's not a low number. There are, their numbers for a lot of these are, it should not supposed to exceed 50 tons, it would be 250 tons, 400 tons. These are just examples. I mean, they're not going to be running every day, but the point that I'm trying to make is that they're taking these large quantities, and they're spewing them out in a matter of a couple of days. And that's okay with the MPCA. So we could be getting anywhere from four to 10 times the emission, above the emission limits from the MPCA in those four days, and that's allowed. And I thought, that just doesn't sit right. So I called MPCA today, and I talked for a long time, and she said that is absolutely 100% correct. We do not do spot or interval numbers. You can, they could, they could put out all 50 tons in one day, and that's okay, as long as they don't exceed it in a year. So for those few days that they are operating, we are going to be bombarded with anywhere from four to eight, 10 times the amount that's supposed to be allowable. So on those days, it's not going to be good. And they also said the same thing about how their smell, you know, the ones, the particulates that can cause, or the toxins that can cause odors. Well, those days, I mean, we're looking at 10 times the amount. So yeah, when they're not running, maybe it won't be, but the days that they're running, it's going to be a problem. And people with respiratory problems, people that have small children, any, people that have any kind of health issues, on the days that they are running, it could be a real definite hazard for them. So that's what I wanted to say about what you were talking about. The MPCA, I asked them about different types of regulations and how they have to monitor it. And they said what their job is to do is that when they go in with their permit, they have, you know, they'll have to fill out what all they're going to do, because all asphalt plants are going to be different depending on, as far as the emissions, depending on what they're putting into the asphalt. So that is all worked on. But what the MPCA's job is to do is to make sure that they don't go above the 50 tons per year, and they make sure that they have the proper control mechanisms in place to help keep those emissions down, and that they are maintained, and that they have to monitor to ensure that they are being maintained. But on any given day, if it's really bad, we can call and complain, and they will take the complaint, but as long as they're in compliance for the entire year, they are good to go. So that is something I think people really need to take into consideration. The other thing that I found out from the Pollution Control is that they don't do combined emissions. So even though this is going to be right next to Crystal Sugar, as long as both of them are in compliance on less than 50 tons per year, on days if they're both running at the same time, we could have, you know, who knows how high that some of these smells and some of these emissions could be, and it'll still be in compliance. And the other thing, I started to think about as you were talking earlier, is, okay, if they're tapped off at 50, and they want to run for, say, 45 days, they say from May to October, it's not going to take them very long before they hit that 50-ton mark. So then what are they going to do? They've got all the land, you're zoning it industrial, they could put in another one. So then that, then they're allowed another 50 tons to be emitted, or another 50 tons, or another 50 tons. There are no limits. MPCA does not set limits for how many different industries can be together and can be, and can be releasing all of these toxins.
Let me, let me put this a different way. Ms. Ellis, it's not in her wheelhouse to be able to monitor any of this. It's definitely not in mine. I don't think anyone within the city has that expertise. It sounds like you may have it.
The, the only monitoring that-
Let me ask you this. Because it's a special use permit, we can require different things. So can you come up with a plan that says you need to, I don't know, monitor the air on a daily basis and meet these standards? And if you don't, then we can shut you down? Can you do something like that for us?
I think that would be something that you would have to do with MPCA.
MPCA isn't going to do that, because they've already got their monitoring standards that they're going to comply with. They're not going to make special ones for us. I'm asking, can you do that for us?
I can, I could probably put you in contact with some people that could tell you different ways to monitor it, different ways it can be done through the EERC, perhaps. It won't be cheap, and a lot of things can't be. Some things would have to be tested through a lot of different lab analysis and such. But as far as, the point that I'm trying to make is, even if it doesn't matter how high it is, because as long as it's spread out over the year, it's in compliance.
I understand that. I'm not spreading it out over the year. I'm saying, can we monitor day by day? And maybe not the days that they're open, maybe just the days that they're in operation, and here's the standards that they've got to meet within those days of operation.
I guess it would depend on what you want monitored. Because when I was talking to MPCA, when she was, and asking about these, they do have a list of different types of monitoring that does have to be done, and how often, frequently they have to do. And those are, the things that they have to monitor are those lists that they supply to you.
I understand.
To get any additional, I think you would have to hire a lab to do that.
I wouldn't. I would require them to, but that's fine.
Yeah, I know EERC does do some type of analysis, but you would probably have to find a company that would be willing to go out and do that. And there are some that are available, but it's not going to, it's not going to-
Zach, as a rebuttal, I've got some questions for you. If anyone is going to be at the most risk, it's going to be your workers on the site. Do you require them to wear any respirators or anything when they're coming and going or working on site?
I, I don't know.
That's a question for Zach.
Okay, sorry.
No, they are not required onsite by OSHA, or our staffs are required.
Have you ever been fined by OSHA because you have, one of your employees has gotten sick because of emissions?
We have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
The only other comment, well, I guess there's two comments, is that from what we've read from the size of this one, this particular plant is much larger than any of the other plants that have been around here. So you would probably have to, you could look to see if there are others. A lot of the studies are done on workers, and some of them, they do recommend, in the studies, they do recommend that they wear certain protective gear. But that was the other thing, you know, talking about the complaints, Ms. Ellis said that she had contacted, you know, a lot of the different asphalt plants, or not contacted them, but looked to see if there were any filed complaints. And I also tried to do that. And there weren't. I didn't see any either, but I also looked, and there aren't any filed complaints from Crystal Sugar or from Simplot. I mean, typically around here, we don't file complaints, not formal complaints. I think most people, if they want to complain, they pick up the phone and they call the company themselves, or they may call, you know, one of you. But for the most part, people don't do formal complaints, we complain to each other. And so the fact that there haven't been any formal complaints being filed, I don't think that's necessarily a reassuring thought-
I might argue with you.
-that it's not going to stick.
If I were an employee of a company and I got sick because of the-
Oh, that, but I'm just talking about-
I think I would report.
Yes, I'm just talking about environmental people complaining.
I'd like to thank you for your time. We've got a whole room here, and I bet a lot of people want to talk.
Yep, I'm done, and I will give you-
So not to rush you off, but-
No, I'm done, I was done.
I don't want to be here until 10 o'clock.
I just have one question for you, real quick.
Yes.
All those, all those numbers that you just gave us, is, on all those-
Different toxins?
Different toxins. Are all those, every one of those you talked about has to do with an asphalt plant?
No, that's what I'm saying, no. And that's what I was trying to clarify in the beginning. These are known toxins.
So your numbers are pretty escalated to them?
The toxins are from the known asphalt plant. These are the main toxins that are emitted from the asphalt. But what I wanted to do was to say, these are not just random, this stuff has been staked.
Right, but those numbers are pretty escalated to them, is what you're saying?
No, those are PubMed actual numbers of that.
For an asphalt plant, they're escalated?
Or, that's, that's not the point I was trying to make. Some of them, if it's in emissions, it could be. These, the numbers are specific to-
Mrs. Raymond?
Yes.
Coincide with this chart.
Thank you.
I would just, Zach, again, I would just like to address a couple items she mentioned and clarify. First of all, figure 2.0 in there with the estimated production, that was, that chart and that graph, or that chart was designed to show what possibly was estimated based on past history, what would maybe be produced at this site. Now, that's separate from the emissions calculations. So this is what we possibly would do at this site over here. How the MPCA monitors on, and what we provided on figure 5.1 and the corresponding graphs on 5.2 and 5.3. The plant itself gets an air emissions permit. It goes with the plant, whether the plant is at this site or anywhere else in Minnesota throughout the year, the tons of asphalt that are produced from this plant is how this calculation is produced. So whether it's operating 16 days at this site and 20 other days, this is the total emissions for this year. Now, our, these two different plants obviously run a different type of crews. One produces quite a different amount of mix. We provided both plants because we're not sure which plant will be on this site, what jobs we will have in this area, to be transparent. These numbers are what, the most, if this plant sat here all year long and produced mix all year long for jobs in this area, that's what these emissions would be for those plant sites. Obviously, the year-to-year depends on the product amount. We don't have the same amount of asphalt year-to-year, so that's why there's some variation in those, in those permits. One other thing, this, these results are based on third-party testing. The MPCA requires us to get a stack test, and then that's how these emission calculations are best based on. That stack test is performed by an independent third-party lab.
So these aren't tests that Zaverell, RJ Zaverell done themselves?
I can't go out and test it for them. That's based on that.
Question about a stack test, so they'll capture your emissions for a period of time with certain volume?
Yes.
They'll bring it to their lab, and they'll test for the identified items there? And they can run the whole battery on one sample?
They're running, yeah. They require us to run, yeah. If there's any changes to the plant, any modifications, or anything like that, we have to rerun it, yes. Yep. Yep. Any other questions or clarifications?
I have one, if you could. There'd been a lot of discussion regarding the amount of trucks, 30 an hour, and I guess I'm a little confused, because in the materials that I looked at, it was looking at more like five an hour on the average, and we're talking 30, which is a big difference.
Just to clarify on that, again, in this discussion, if a large-scale project, say a Highway 2 project that happened last year, from, from East Grand Forks all the way to Fisher, a large project that, that's where that peak would be met, typical day-to-day operations where we paved these Grand Forks schools last year, elementary schools, that's just like that other plant in Grand Forks that's been mentioned, we'd have five trucks running. Now, those five trucks are spread out between the asphalt paver and our plant. They may not come back every hour, it may be every two hours. So it's two to three, four to five trucks on a normal operation. Now, it does vary, it varies by job. We're trying to be transparent with that. Where there's peaks and valleys, just like the day-to-day operations, and may we have a different schedule than we do in June and whatnot. So it's a, it's a tough thing to narrow down into this, in this pigeonhole. So we're trying to be transparent as possible and address the questions as they come. Thank you.
My name is Jamie Lund, 704 Eighth Street, Southeast. You guys did a great job with all your information. Kudos. I did not. But I am a father of two young boys, and what concerns me, a lot of things, but this plant is going to be run from May until September. What do kids do? Do they stay inside all summer? No. They're going to be breathing all of this stuff in. What is all this stuff? I don't know. I just, I know it's not good air. And I think that's, you know, the traffic, everything else, yeah, it's an issue, but I think the biggest thing is, you know, the air and our kids. I hope that there's some more parents in this room that- I hope that there's some more parents in this room that have the same concerns that I do. And I'm pretty sure there's some parents up here, and hope you have the same concerns that I do. It, can anybody tell me how wide or, you know, East Grand Forks is? Because we're talking, this plant is 1.5 miles away from a school. How far are we in a direction? Grand, East Grand Forks is not that big. You know, what are we, maybe at best, six miles? From tip to tip in some places? I didn't bring my tape measure, but, you know, it, we're not big. And I just think, you know, nothing against Zaveral's, nothing against the plant. I think it's just a piss-poor place to put it, you know? Pardon my French. You know, I think we need to do a lot more investigation. The kids, the community, everybody's been through enough with this bat flu for the last two years and all the restrictions and everything else. Let the kids be kids. In the summertime, let them fight the mosquitoes, but let them breathe clean air. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Sir, just to comment on that. The Zaverals also have all their family, their whole family, their brothers and sisters, aunts, uncles, cousins, children, grandchildren, everybody is living in East Grand Forks. And most of them, and most of, a lot of their employees are living on the Minnesota Point, where this is all from. Do you really think that they would introduce their whole family and their people to this stuff if it was a really, as serious as what everybody's making up?
Over that whole conversation, that's what you have to come back to me.
No, no, I'm just asking you if you think they would.
I live on the point, too.
I understand that. I don't live far from it myself. I live right over by Riverside Christian School. But, but, and the other, and the other thing is, you know, Mr. Vedder brought it up about moving that plant out east to their dump site. If they move it out there, you're going to have the same people and the same, everybody's going to be doing the same thing. So where is a good spot for it? Because no matter where you go, you're going to have the same people complaining about the same issues. Right?
Move it away from the schools. Move, yeah.
And it's my understanding when they, when they told them they couldn't put it out there by Simplot, that the people there told them to move it over to where they're trying to go now. And now, and now that's not working. So I'm just asking, I just think that, you know, they get a look at their own family here, too. They're not going to put their family into danger. Why would they? I mean, I think the Zaverals are a pretty close-knit family there, you know?
They're a great family. I'm sure they are.
I'm just saying that some of these things that we're talking about, you know, is, is... I don't, I'm just, I'm just asking you what, you know, if they would...
Are we on record here? I think that's one of the most dumbass rebuttals that you've ever asked.
Well, you can say what you want, but I'm just saying...
I don't want to say what I want. You can say what you want, too.
Let's keep it civil.
I am keeping it civil. I was walking away, and you have to start asking me this?
Just keep it civil.
Well, you're worried about your family. I think they should be worried about theirs.
I am worried about my family.
Yeah, well, everybody is. That's why we're here.
Everybody else in here is worried about their family, too. You know, we can agree to disagree. That's not what I'm here to do. I wasn't here to argue. Apparently, you are.
No, I'm not here to argue. I'm just asking.
You have a nice day there, Dale.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenna Jorgensen, and I live at 17704 29th Avenue, Southwest, East Grand Forks. My husband and I have bought our house six years ago this coming August. I do have many concerns about this upcoming asphalt plant. I have had attended the previous meetings about this topic. The city council meeting in January to annex the land, I was at, but chose not to speak due to my outstanding public speaking skills. I quickly realized this was a mistake. I attended the planning and zoning meeting last Thursday that six people stood up and expressed their concerns and proposed that this plant does not get built on this land. Four of those people were four of the five houses that are within less than a mile of from this proposed plant. During that meeting, the hours of proposed times would be from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, six days a week. It is unknown if they will close this thiefer falls plant that has been in discussion. If they close that plant, you can pretty much guarantee that it will be 30 trucks an hour if they have to compensate for that plant being closed. So if you do the math, that is about 480 trucks per day, along with the Highway 2 traffic, and of course, the trains. That is 2,880 trucks every six days by my house, along with the other five people that live within this mile. At this planning and zoning committee, it said that this was insignificant. I beg to differ, that 2,880 trucks is insignificant to these five houses as this would be affecting. I do have a daughter, and this guy right here I want to give a handshake to because she is two years old, and the one thing she wants to do the most is be outside. And I am right off Highway 2, and this would be affecting me and my family. And I do think that this is a big deal to take into consideration. So I guess, I do want to ask all of you that if your child or grandchildren would be outside during the short summer months that we have here in Minnesota, and we have to deal with the smell and the noise and the trucks and the plant itself all summer long, that this wouldn't bother you at all? You know, there is also 168 hours in one week. So if this six to 10 goes, that's 96 hours total that this plant would be running. That leaves us 72 hours. 72 hours of no trucks, no smell for us to endure where I bought my house six years ago without an asphalt plant on the corner. I don't think it's fair to us. I don't. Put yourself in my shoes. If you were to live where I live, you can 1,000% tell me that you'd be supporting this if you're in one of our five houses? I bought my house to raise our children in the country for a reason. And the other concern is the resale value. If this plant does go up, who's going to want to buy my house? There was a comment at the Planning and Zoning Committee by a business owner that stood up. And the comment was that one of the city council members said that this was a win-win for the city. And it's too bad that this world has come to, to win our voices, and our concerns are not being considered. I'm here for a reason tonight, and I don't feel like anybody's listening. And it's too bad that this is what it's come to. With that being said, you should take all of our concerns into consideration about the noise and the smell and the health reasons to make this decision. I also want to remind you that that Highway 2 project done last year was successfully completed without an asphalt plant within city limits. There has, there has to be a better location. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Kelly Driscoll from 42813 170th Street, Southwest. I actually work for an asphalt company. And let's be honest here, they're going to have 60 feet piles of Class 5 sand and crusher dust. Crusher dust is exactly what it sounds like. It's dust. When the wind blows, I am less than a quarter mile away from that place. It's all going to blow into my yard, and we all know that the wind blows northwest. They say it hardly does. It does. Look at this winter. It's blowing 90% of the time out of the northwest. You can't tell me, when they're running generators there, they ain't going to have no power there for, they said, over a year. They got to heat their AC tanks to 260 to 280 degrees, 35,000 gallon tank. They're going to have to run that generator 24 hours a day to keep the oil hot in the tank. You guys have never even been to an asphalt plant site when it was running in full bore. How many of you? Just one? Two of you have. You, what do you think of the noise and the smell?
Well, when you say a generator, you know, I mean, I've got a generator...
Generator runs at 1,800 RPMs.
Excuse me, sir. I'm just finishing my rebuttal here on your generator. I have a generator that's four lots from my home, and that runs the sewer, you know, the backup for our systems in town. Every lift station has that. Now, you can, you can hear it when you're on the street, but you can't, as you get a little further away, and they're not bad. I mean, they got, they got them downward. They're pretty quiet, and I believe that that system works, you know?
But I think you should go up to their site when it's running, full bore, and actually listen to a generator that's running at 1,800 RPMs. That's just the thing here. None of you guys really know what it's all about. And it's not only the smell from when they're mixing it. It's the smell coming from the tank when it's being heated at 260 or 280 degrees. It's the fumes from the tank. And that's going to be blowing right towards us. And I got two kids of my own at home, ages nine and 10. And they like playing out in the yard, too. And let's be honest here, if it wasn't for Zaverals putting a plant there, let's say it was Knife River wanting to put a plant there, this thing would have been shut down a long time ago, and you know it. Should be a conflict of interest for you guys even to be voting on this because of all that Zaverals have done for the city and the money they've donated and whatever else. You know dang well, if it was a different company, you wouldn't be even having this discussion right now. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm John Jeffrey. I'm one of the supervisors with Huntsville Township. Scott Bushy, our chairman, is here, and there's Dan. Dan Zavrell's our third supervisor. I think I've explained it before, but just to make sure. You know, we're a municipality like the city, except we got a board of three people called supervisors. We also have a planning and zoning commission. And we do our own zoning, you know, for that 36 square miles that's east of East Grand Forks. And if you remember, I was here, I don't know, I'm getting so old I can barely remember what I had for breakfast, but quite a while ago, and we did the annexation. And at that point, I asked you guys, hold on this, right? Don't do the annexation. Let's discuss, get all the details. Find out really, you know, what's going on here. And, you know, it went ahead anyway with the idea that, well, you know, we'll fix it once it gets to your planning and zoning commission. So then I went to the planning and zoning commission, and I had, you know, one individual, Mike Powers, voted no. Everybody else just voted yes, and they didn't give you any conditions or suggestions or anything. And poor Nancy can't give you any suggestions or conditions or whatever. And here we are, and now, at the beginning of the meeting, I talked to Mr. Galstead. And this is why he's a specialist in municipal law, and I'm a specialist in retirement law. Because he explains to me that when you guys pass this, there's no going back. There's no like one year, or review, or we're going to add some stuff farther down the road. It's a done deal, you know? That's it. I mean, so if you pass this, and you say, yeah, you can put it there, and you meet the MPCA requirements, that's a pretty low bar, right? I mean, it is true, 50 tons is the criteria. They do the stack testing. I don't know, is that done annually? Or once every three years, or what the frequency is of the stack testing? But it could go all the way up to 50 tons if that's the criteria. And so, Mr. Vedder, you were looking for some practical, you know, suggestions? And here's one with regards to smell and emissions. So in their materials, they tell you the list of all the stuff that the plant's going to put out, right? Four of those things, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxide, volatile organic compounds, and formaldehyde. By their own admission, on their submission to you, they tell you that that smells. They also tell you, you know, what their plant has produced, these two plants, over the last two years. And, you know, what they explain to the planning and zoning guys is, you know, well, we're not really going to use this a whole lot, you know, and it'll all be fine. One suggestion, I took a look at what they said were the maximum outputs over the last two years. And then to give them the benefit of the doubt, they said, add one ton to that. And so their stack emissions, for example, on sulfur dioxide, you know, instead of four tons annually, put the cap at five tons. Now, you don't have to worry that, you know, because they don't, they can't say what size plant they're bringing in here, right? And they, they tell you that you're not going to really use it too much more than what they're currently using it. So we don't know what's going in there, but we do know that if you just say yes, the max is 50 tons. So one thing that you can measure that's definitive is that production of sulfur dioxide. Put the cap at five tons, right up to now, the max that they've been doing is four tons. Then the next one, nitrogen oxide. Also, on their chart, they say this smells. Right now, the max over the last two years between these two plants was 11 tons. Give them an extra ton, set the limit there, 12 tons. Volatile organic compounds, six tons is what their usage is, set it at seven. And then finally, formaldehyde, which I suppose comes in handy if we don't want to get embalmed by Dole. They're, you know, they're at 0.6 tons, so put it at 1.6. It's somewhat arbitrary, but at least it gives you a benchmark, and you're not giving them a blank check that whatever the heck they want to do, you know, or they sell it to somebody else or whatever. Because according to Mr. Galstead, this runs with the land. What does that mean? It's not just you and me. It's, you know, the kids, the grandkids, whoever ends up with this site in the future. You know, what you're okaying is really a smokestack industry that's going to go in this place. This is not, you know, just some guys are going to make stuff, but they're making stuff, and in the course of making stuff, stuff is coming out of the stack. So that's, you know, it seems to me that this thing is just marching ahead, but you got to put some restrictions. If you can't put the restrictions, or you don't know what's going to go there, you know, then that's the reason to turn it down now, let them come back to the table, and then bring in, you know, some outside folks that can give you these answers that Mr. Vedder's looking for. I mean, the, I don't know it. Nancy admits that this isn't in her wheelhouse, you know? So we don't know, you know, I mean, maybe it's not a problem at all, you know? I mean, I hope that that's the case, you know, that it goes there and nobody, you know, you know, smells a thing, and emissions are fine, and life goes on. But I really don't think that's the case. Even in the materials that they submitted to planning and zoning, and I don't know if that packet goes to you guys as well, but in that material that they submitted, they gave you material from MPCA. And in there, MPCA says, okay, if you're going to be a good business in the area, you have to, there's a section that says beyond compliance. And it suggests things that the applicant should do that's beyond just meeting MPCA rules. Because MPCA doesn't take care of dust, doesn't take care of noise, and doesn't take care of smell. So if you're going to put some restrictions, MPCA says, okay. You know, those aggregate piles that Mr. Kelly's, you know, concerned about that are going to blow all over, MPCA says you can require that those be covered, or that they regularly, you know, water them down. Same thing, you know, we've got a quarter-mile gravel road that at some point could have a heck of a lot of traffic. You've got Mr. Delisle, who wants to develop commercial land to the south. All of the township is zoned commercial around this. You've just got that little island that you guys created, right? A quarter-mile road with 22 acres at the top, all around it zoned commercial. So, you know, you can have a restriction that they got to keep the road watered. They would have to keep conveyors covered. Those are things or suggestions coming from MPCA, you know, that seem like reasonable restrictions that you guys could put on it. With regards to noise, a lot of discussion that they're not going to have crushing on site. I know how this goes with time, right? We do this thing, and then we never remember, and then someone's going to dust off the permit, you know, five years from... you know, five years from now, after they start crushing something or other. Just put it on there anyway. If they're not having crushing, make a line item in your permit that says, okay, you guys can be here, no crushing. We don't care if you're crushing asphalt, you're crushing concrete, no crushing. Limit the duration, you know, we certainly should have something in that permit. If they say they're operating mid-May, you know, through October, you know, so September 30, they close her up. That will help too, because remember, what do you got going? You've got County Road 17 with a whole bunch of traffic that's going to be coming down there for beet harvest. And for some reason, we started harvesting beets, it seems like, earlier and earlier around here. This would help, you know, on that traffic congestion that's already a dangerous intersection, 17, crossing Highway 2, you know, we've had some accidents there. I mean, having that plant be done with their heavy operation by the end of September, at least there's some end of the, or light at the end of the tunnel for these poor folks that are so close. And then on the operation, right now, they say that they're going to operate, you know, their current plant's operating, you know, 16 days during the season. You know, limit the number of days so that at least the adjacent homeowners got, you know, some peace once in a while, you know, that the operation's going to be limited. I suggested 30 days. I mean, I don't know, you know, if there's a whole lot of reason behind that other than they're saying that their operation is going to be a lot less than that, you know. Set some limit, and once again, so you don't end up with some surprise farther down the road and have, you know, operation that's going full bore, that they end up, you know, they or some successor ends up being able to operate like there's no tomorrow. And keeping in mind, Mr. Galstead pointed out that the permit is not to Zaveral's. It runs with the land. That's a legal term. That means if they sell the land to anybody, that's the guys you now have to work with. So Zaveral's can be honorable, is all get out, and promise you that they'll be good neighbors and whatever. Someone else ends up, you know, owning that site, they're only limited by any restrictions that you guys put on it. And then finally, you know, with regards to the hours of operation, I mean, I know they want to run later, but it seems like in the summer months, especially for those poor homeowners that are close, you know, that operation could stop by seven, you know, we're running Monday through Saturday, so give them a break. I don't know, you know, if there's some way or how to address odor. As I understand it, other than those metrics I gave you on the sulfur dioxide, the nitrogen oxide, that, you know, I did contact a couple of engineering firms. Basically, what they told me is that asphalt stinks, and, you know, there's no way to monitor it. I did see, you know, there's ads out there by folks that can somehow, you know, I don't know if they have like, how they make asphalt not smell, but they got, you know, something that along those lines, but, you know, that's, that's an issue, and you know how air carries around here. I mean, I'm two miles south of East Grand Forks. Depending upon, you know, temperature and wind, I mean, sometimes I can smell french fries being cooked way the heck out there. So, you're focused on the point. I don't know which of you guys represent the point, but someone's phone's going to be ringing at some point, I would guess this summer when the wind's right, you know, someone's going to be smelling that plant. And it'll still be within MPCA criteria, but you guys are going to have issues. So, I would, I would say that, you know, a good spot for the plant, in answer to Mr. Helm's question, here's the good spot for the plant. Zaveral's have been doing just fine. According to, once again, their own submission, they had $54 million of revenue. I don't begrudge them that. They got that with that plant up in Thief River. That's a good place for that plant. Just leave the plant up in there. They did their projects around here. They made money, you know. They bring that plant to East Grand Forks. That's, I haven't heard any discussion about added jobs on property value. Remember, you know, the plant's portable, so they got a contractor's yard, but when it comes time for the county to assess them, and I contacted the county to make sure this is how it works, that plant is personal property. It's just like parking a truck there. So you don't get to, you know, have all that value help out with your schools, or your city, or everything else. You get taxed on a contractor's yard, and that's it. So with that, you know, it's a pretty emotional issue, I think, for everybody, you know, for Zaveral's, for our residents, even for me. I mean, it's hard, you know, when these kinds of things happen, but I just hope that if you guys pass it, put some restrictions on it, have some good discussion amongst you about, you know, what makes sense, and then go from there. Thank you.
John, I have a question. Oh, sorry, Brian has a question.
I've got a few.
Go ahead.
I just have one.
You're usually quick. So, yeah, so with, you know, you mentioned that you heard, or you can smell sin plot. Do you smell the asphalt plant that's right next to it?
No, but I mean, we don't know what that asphalt plant is, Mark.
What do you mean, you don't know what it is? It's an asphalt plant.
Right.
And you don't smell it, but you say you smell sin plot.
What's its production, you know, how often does it run?
Do you hear the races?
I mean, is it apples to apples?
Do you hear the races?
And Mark?
Do you hear the races? I'm asking a question.
Well, I thought you were recused from this discussion. I mean...
I can ask you, John. I live on the north end. I can hear the races. I do not smell the asphalt plant.
Yeah.
I'm within one mile, as a crow flies, from that asphalt plant.
Okay.
So you know that.
But I mean, Tim, how often does that plant run? I mean, are they producing, you know, I don't know. I mean, have we talked to OP to see what their production is? Is it the same plant that Zaveral's are bringing in, same year, same, you know, emissions control? I mean, maybe they got some kind of state-of-the-art thing there, and nobody smells it. I don't know.
I haven't, I've not smelled it, period.
Yeah, just a few comments, Mr. Jeffries, and thanks to everyone that's came up and spoke. You guys have done a wonderful job. I'm Kevin, I'm kind of backing up to your initial comments here. What I'm hearing is a request for the city of East Grand Forks to require stricter environmental compliance than the state of Minnesota. And I'm having a hard time with that, understanding our authority to do so, understanding that within this permit, we could write anything into the permit. That's very clear. But if we were to require stricter environmental compliance than the state of Minnesota requires, state of Minnesota is already twice as strict as the federal requirements. I'm concerned on how that would impact American Crystal Sugar, just to the west, as they have a very large coal-fired stack. Setting some of the very low emissions standards that you had mentioned by adding a ton or whatnot, that could effectively shut down the Crystal Sugar plant, in theory. I'm not an environmental scientist now.
Yeah, but as I understand it, Mr. Larson, that what you're, you're not issuing, you know, restrictions on Crystal or anybody else. It's on this new use that, you know, so Crystal's been around for 100 years. We all built our houses, known we're going to smell American Crystal, right? Benefits the community as a whole. I grew up around here. Everybody says it smells like money, right? But this is something, this is something new. And so that would be the rationale tied with the fact that you're not changing all the emissions. You're just changing the four that they say that smell. And so these things smell. They have their criteria of how much they're going to produce, and we're saying, okay, we'll give you that if it's going to smell. Here is the benchmark. Don't go beyond that. This is, you know, historically what you've been doing. So that would be the reasoning behind it, not to affect Crystal or anybody else.
Sure. I appreciate the response. And I also appreciate how you kind of separated the issues and the concerns here. This is such a large issue, and we have this kind of blank agenda item, as I'm also somewhat frustrated by. The environmental compliance and being stricter than the state, I've expressed my concerns with that. The dust and the noise and the smell, which you mentioned, are not regulated. And those would be items that, you know, locally, we could certainly address in the permit. And I'd like to pivot to the Zaveral's. If you could, please, repeat your request related to crushing and dust control.
Okay, so on, what I suggested was that because crushing is not going to happen on the site, just so that we have a record that crushing's not going to happen on the site, that the permit indicate no crushing of concrete or asphalt on the site. Should be not contentious. They say they're not going to do it. Put it in, end of story.
Any rebuttal, Zach? Or Nancy?
One just comment on the dust suppression. The dust monitoring with the haul road and the plant, and then the piles, sorry, is monitored and required under the stormwater permit that we're required to have for the site. So that, I mean, it would, it's up to you guys whether, what your requirements are, but that is also one of our requirements as a permit holder, is to maintain that.
So as part of your MPCA stormwater pollution control, your dust control is regulated by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, Mr. Larson, can I ask, so how is it regulated? What's the state telling you you can and can't do?
We are required to suppress the dust, obviously, if there's dust collar. Typical other sites, we have to, whether we do a water suppression, blading, calcium chloride, sometimes is an option. There's varying types of options in the watering. Typically, it's a water. As you travel, you know, if we're not on-site, typically, there's no dust created. If we're trucking up and down that site, just like any gravel road in the summertime, that's when we typically have to add water. Our water truck usually goes with our asphalt plant production crew. That's part of our daily, our daily crew. They have to water that, blade the roads, maintain them. We have truck traffic going up and down. We want nice roads. We want our trucks to see each other as they're coming up and down that road, whether it's this site or other sites. It's a safety thing as well for us.
Sure. Would you let us know how, or, go ahead, John, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, how about the piles of aggregate, or, you know, all the materials you're going to mix? How do you control dust on that?
There again, if it becomes an issue, you'd have to suppress with water, yeah.
But I mean, is the MPCA, does the MPCA regulate that, or just you're running up and down?
Yes, it falls under our MPCA permit, yes.
Thank you.
So there are two, Mr. Larson, I'd suggest, you know, we're all in agreement, they're going to suppress the dust. They're going to suppress the dust on the piles, put it in the permit, you know. I mean, it certainly can't hurt, and everybody's going to do it, and then we got a record that, you know, this is part of the deal. So we don't have to dig through, you know, MPCA rules, or the rules change, or it turns out, you know, that there was some technicality. Just put it in the permit. Now we know, okay. Got to keep the roads watered, got to keep the aggregate piles watered, you know, to suppress dust.
Simply by conforming to the permits that the state requires?
Well, so what I'm suggesting is if you say that, then, you know, I don't know what goes into the detail, but I do know that if I say they're supposed to water the road and water the pile, that as a layperson, I understand. So, you know, just merely referencing the state rule or whatever, that doesn't, I think, help both the council and everybody else farther down the road, because someone's got to then dig through something at a future date and figure out whether they're doing it or not. So, just put it in as a benchmark.
I know, I am one of those. It probably doesn't read everything, because I was just told that earlier tonight. But under your option two, you have that all listed out on your one form.
I do.
He reads everything.
I read everything, more than once.
Good.
Robbie.
I do have a quick thought or question. When you would order a stack test, how long from when you would order a stack test until it's performed on average? How long does that take?
Depends on, I mean, we have to schedule in advance, obviously, and coordinate. It depends on their workload. There's multiple different agencies that are available, depending on their schedule. Typically, it's a few weeks. A month, a couple, maybe two months, eight weeks at most, so.
What I was curious about is if, I'd say up to once a year or twice a year, if odor increased, that someone could initiate a stack test, you know, almost like a random drug test for an employee, but an episodic or random stack test, that, because if you've got emissions out the stack and odors out the stack, I would think they all kind of run together. You know, you're going to have more of this, more of this, more of this, because you're chugging at a higher clip. And so perhaps there could be one of those conditions, once a year, twice a year, because I'm sure it costs money, could be disruptive. Even if it's once a year that we build in, that at the request of some process, we're detecting unusually high aroma, we're going to request the stack test be performed within so much period of time as a condition of approval, just a possibility.
Yep, well, yeah, obviously, our concerns would be the cost, and then also, who's the judge, and what criteria is it based on?
That's it. You'd have to have a process.
That's two concerns I have, so.
Just an idea.
And Merrigander, I don't know if we have an answer on the frequency of their stack test. I mean, if the city's not requesting it, what's the MPCA frequency on this submission?
It's required every three years, I believe, so, okay.
So there are two, you know, there's monitoring, but it's once every three years, they have a stack test to see, you know, if they're meeting this 50-ton criteria.
One clarification to that, obviously, if there's any modifications to that plant, there would be a requirement that would trigger that stack test. These plants don't typically change. They're costly, and they're not allowed to change from year to year, so.
I would think what they're trying to do is to certify your process.
Correct.
To make sure the process that you're using fits into their criteria, and that's why it could be three years. It's not like you're continuously revising the process, oh, tomorrow we're out of compliance. So the implication would be that you follow the same exact strategy until such time as there's a change, and then you test it again.
And they put provisions in that test that encourage contractors to do their best. Obviously, there's a cost value based on your performance of that test. That's how some of their criteria is met. So they encourage you to achieve better standards, more or less by doing it that way, so.
Thanks.
But is it a snapshot? I mean, it's just like, one day they show up, they run the test, and then three years later, then they show up and run the test for one day of operation.
I'd think they'd have to catch it running full bore? Was that a stipulation? Yeah, yeah. Run in full bore?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions, or me? Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, I'm coming back here.
Name is Jenna Carter, 4281-370 St., Southwest. My family owns 75 acres from Highway 2 along 17, and it's actually ironic that we are here today fighting over land. My grandma, Donna Driscoll, the aunt of these Enrights sitting behind me, fought for this from her brother. So it's ironic that we're here today. In my family trust, I am said to inherit the acres closest from Highway 2, next to my uncle's house on 17, and where I plan to build my forever home with my husband and soon to be three kids. You all have kids. You cannot tell me that you would live next to that plant. And John, I've known you since I was five years old, and you cannot tell me that you would put your daughter and your three kids next to that. And Zach, I know your wife, you don't know me. We grew up together, and I know your wife would say no too. Another point I would like to make is the traffic. Have you driven down 17 during beet harvest? Any of you? Yeah, it's very, very dangerous. Yeah, it's very, very dangerous. I don't know how many times myself and my family have come upon accidents, and I guarantee someone will die, and they will, you guys will be sued. That, that is a promise. And what is this gonna do to the land value, the farmers who make up most of this community? The only people that are benefiting from this are you guys and them. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
My name is Lana Driscoll. I live at 6164 Camilla Circle, Grand Forks, North Dakota. Up here, just a moment ago, was my daughter Jenna. I have a vested, I'm vested in this, because my family owns part of that land, and I've not heard anything about the contaminants. What's it gonna do to the water table? I mean, what about people that have wells? What's it gonna do to their water? And what's it gonna do to that farmland? And what's gonna happen when it devalues it? At one time, my mother, Donna Enright Driscoll, was offered $10,000 an acre for that, because it was so close to American Crystal. And what is it gonna go to now? I have a vested interest in this, and so does my family. And my brother is Kelly Driscoll, that has two children out there, and like my daughter said, the traffic is terrible during beet season. Can you imagine what it's gonna be like when you're running your trucks? Somebody is gonna get killed out there. I, myself, have come upon many accidents, because I had lived out there myself. And I wish you would take deep consideration before soon. Thank you.
I move the open session be closed, public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Session is not opposed. Move on to consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be pulled from the consent agenda for discussion and action if they choose. Would any council member like any of the two items pulled? Do we have a motion now?
Moving three and four.
And motion on three and four?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Megan?
Reappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. Acknowledged receipt of reports of officers, boards, and commissions, rate or meeting of Water and Light Power and Building Commission for March 16th, 2022. Communications, none. Old business, none. New business. Consider approval or denial of the special use permit to construct and operate a hot mixed asphalt plant. Move my arms.
All second with a stipulation here. I didn't like the idea that if the Zavrels wanted to sell this, that someone else could have, would have this permit. I would say that with the condition that that would be revoked if, if that were the case.
I do not believe that that's possible. It runs with the land, so once it's, once the permit is in place, as long as they're substantially compliant, that permit doesn't dissolve.
If it were a new plant, though, they would have to sell the entire plant, all operations. It would have to continue to exist, exist exactly as how Zavrels were operating it. Any change in that would make the special use permit null and void.
I agree with that.
As well as if they were to sell it, and the site were to remain empty or unused for a year, that permit also becomes invalid. It would have to remain in, you know, in operation. So there are a couple of different ways. So it would have to operate exactly as Zavrels was given.
Any discussion? Clarence?
Thank you, Acting President. I'm not ready to vote on this. I think that we need to put some stuff into the special use permit, so if we're gonna vote on it as it is now, then I'll vote no. If we bring it back to work session where we can put some checks and balances into there, then I may vote for it, but as it sits right now, I'll vote no.
I feel the same way. I'd like to see some restrictions placed if we do move forward with it, if that would carry.
Restrictions to keep in mind that were also stated in the report. One thing you want to keep in mind is the amount of time in operation, so you can set it from May 15th to September 30th, et cetera. You can set hours of operation. Currently, we have construction hours, where we operate Monday through Friday, 7 to 10, Saturdays 9 to 9. You can go with no holidays, you can go with no Sundays, you can do it weather-dependent. If so many rain days, then you can extend out. You can limit it to number of days, such as Mr. Zavrels said, that's stated in the report. You can base it on the permits that they receive from the MPCA and the EPA. One comment that was made at the Planning Commission was that if they are in violation of those permits, that the MPCA's job is to bring them back into compliance. We can set it so that they must be in compliance with those permits. Any violation would declare the special use permit null and void. So then they don't have that concern that, oh, they're violating the permit, so now they have a year to comply with that. You could set that. You could just state they must comply with the 50 tons per year. If they're not in compliance with that, when they run their stack test, or we could require a stack test every year, if they're, if they're in violation of it, then they're in violation of our permit, because the condition is no violations to the state and federal permits. So that would be one. You could put, another stipulation would be while in operation, someone would go out periodically monitor dust. If there was an issue that they would have to address dust control on the roads or on the piles, within a certain period of time, so many hours, within 24 hours, within two hours, within six hours. Those are some of the things. The MPCA requires a compliance audit for hot mix asphalt plants, you could require that, and I believe, Mr. Brooks, do you already do one for a new plant?
Stack test?
No, not the stack test, the MPCA compliance audit.
Audit, yes, correct.
Yes, and you do those before it starts, or during?
Anytime you move an audit or, an site inspection is needed, so, it'd be yearly or anytime a moab is in place.
You could require submittals of the stack, or any sort of testing, monitoring, et cetera, to us once a year. We could submit those then to the MPCA and EPA for review. We could submit it for independent review at the contractor's cost. Those are a couple of things to consider. I typically don't want to put in my report necessarily exactly everything that the council should consider, because I am not an asphalt plant operator, nor do I work for the MPCA. But those were a couple of the conditions that, that we've worked through, that staff has worked through, that we've reviewed. The other one would be the requirement that electrical service be put in, and that the generator be used only as backup as soon as possible. So those were a couple of the conditions that were discussed by staff. They would be up for you guys for review, make any changes, add it, deletions, have new issues with it going to a work session. However, the one thing that we need is, whether it's approval or denial, we need those reasons from said council members, so that it can be written into a findings of fact. So.
May I? The only other question I would have is, this would have to be approved or denied within that 60-day rule, and I'm not exactly sure when the permit was, so if you're thinking of adjuring it to a work session and bringing it back, we'd have to have the timing issue on that 60-day rule.
Yeah, and currently, we received the submittal of the application, and I have that with me. Received it May... I think it, excuse me, not May, March 23rd. Between March 23rd and, and the week of, March 21st to the 25th. So we have until the end of May. So, so we do have 60 days still, you know, we still have adequate time to address.
You know, I just, I want to say thank you to everybody. I don't know how this is gonna go, but how very civil that you kept this, you know, where you're thinking of the health of your kids, you're thinking about your quality of life on a nice summer day, and yet, this didn't kind of devolve into some sort of personal attack, and I really appreciate that. We stuck to the facts. We know that we aren't gonna agree on everything, but I really appreciate the tone of this. Again, it's passionate, but it's factual, and this is how we get to do our good work up here. And you know, you kind of shoot yourself in the foot if you come up and, and go beyond that, it doesn't really help the cause, so you guys get that, and I want to say thank you for all of it. Attorneys are pretty good at saying, you know, we oppose this absolutely, unequivocally, we oppose this, and if it's gonna go, though, we want it to go like this. Now maybe, maybe you guys could even have some conversation between now and the work session, while you still oppose it, and say it shouldn't go, but maybe you guys could even start to talk about, you know, if the council's gonna approve it, let's figure out a laundry list of things that you all could agree with, although we still oppose it. Okay? I think that would be very helpful for us. And, and finally, to the Zavrels, if you guys, if it's gonna go, and if you guys are willing to some, submit to some stipulations that you're gonna do anyway, right, as far as watering the road, watering the pile, you're gonna keep it to a high level, and you're gonna stipulate to those things and basically put it into the agreement. What you're also doing is you're helping the city if in two or three generations, if it no longer is Zavrels gonna own that, that you've set the bar high for how they're gonna conduct themselves, right? So you're protecting the city and the neighbors, you know, again, you guys are how many generations in, but if it goes, if it, if it does get approved, by setting that higher bar, you're helping us out to have the enforcement to make sure it's maintained to that level long after you guys are out of the picture, if it goes that way. But they're gonna still oppose it 100%. So just, just know, you're helping us. If you guys are willing to put those into, into the parameters, the things you're gonna do anyway, that, that would help us out a lot. Maybe not in this generation, but maybe two or three generations from now. And if you guys can come up with some, some points that would, would make it a better neighbor, kind of between you guys, that'd be great, and we still expect you to come back to the work session and say, don't approve it. Right. Thanks.
So, I don't know, you know... So Mayor, you know, the devil's in the details, right? And it's apparent that we're not gonna solve this here today. I think that's the invitation that Mayor Gander's giving us. And I don't know, Mr. Gullstadt, you know, open meeting laws or how this works, but it seems like, you know, if, if I and, and some folks, you know, some representative group of the township, and Zavrels, you know, send a couple of guys, and you send a couple of guys, and we sit down and kind of mediate and go, okay, you know, we kind of see where this train's going. But if you guys are gonna approve it, you know, here are some reasonable restrictions. I'd be willing to do that. I don't know if, you know, a couple of councilmen would be willing to be part of that, but I think everybody being part of the solution would help. And, I mean, there may be things in there that Zavrels don't end up liking, obviously things that these folks aren't going to like, but, you know, maybe we can come up with something that, that makes sense. So I, I, that's, I guess your guys' call, but I'd be willing to be part of that.
Thanks, Jen. Mr. Helms?
I guess my question would be, right now with the motion as second on the floor, what do we have to do to?
I can rescind my, my...
Well, we could make a motion to table it to the next work session.
And not worry about the previous motion.
I rescind my second on, on the basis that that was not available to happen if, if, you know, if they would, title would transfer to some other. So I rescind my second.
So we need a motion to bring to, to table it?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. Motion to table.
Second.
Discussion?
And are we tabling it to the next work session?
To the next work session.
Yes. Megan, can you take the call, please?
Reappel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
I'm seated.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. That makes number seven, we'll take that off. Number eight, consider approving the rezoning of lots 10 and 12 and Trails Edition. And smaller pieces are shown on the aerial map from C2 Highway Commercial to I2 General Industrial. Motion on it?
Do you like an explanation?
Give us one, please.
Yes, I will. This piece is located north of Pace Painting, north of the railroad tracks. It's a small piece of land that used to be owned by, if I'm not mistaken, Torgerson Oil, Kitty Corner from East Side Express, and just south of Lulu's Thrift Store. The piece itself has been acting as like a, like a show room for trucks, et cetera. The area itself is quite small because of the two right-of-ways and the railroad easement. Pace Painting purchased it with the idea that they were going to build a storage facility for their equipment, as well as some people that currently rent space from them for their commercial businesses. The piece itself is zoned Highway Commercial. We do not allow storage units of any kind in our Highway Commercial. We allow it in our industrial area. The area just to the east of it is industrial, so they have put in a request to rezone that property. Based on that request, let me grab my information here. Look at a couple of different things when we look at a rezone. Gotta move all my hot mixed asphalt plant stuff. We look at three different things. It is appropriate zoning for the property? Is the zoning fit with the current city comprehensive plan? And how does it fit into the current zoning of the area? The current zoning of the area is Highway Commercial to the west of it, to the north and south of it, but just on the other side of Pace Painting is industrial, just to the east of this property is industrial. So while it doesn't fit into the current zoning, that is why they're rezoning it. Would it fit with their current city comprehensive plan? It does. Our 2050 land use plan that was recently adopted allows for some commercial industrial uses in those areas where it would be hard fit for strictly commercial. When you look at commercial, you're looking at a number of different things. You're looking at utilities, you're looking at parking, you're looking at space for employees, et cetera. This would not need any parking for customers, it would not need any office space, it would not require any types of workers there. And so it is a good fit just to have the building, and then is it appropriate zoning for the property? It is. So based on those things, based on the lack of space and the good fit for that property, we felt that, and the Planning Commission approved the rezone of lots 10 and 12, Block 26 Trails Edition from C2 to I2 for business storage units.
Move by Clarence?
Second.
Anything but Brian? Second by Brian.
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Number nine, consider adopting resolution number 22-04-29 approving the hiring of Ashley Root as the part-time administrative assistant, dispatcher, jailer at a salary of $21.67 per hour.
Move.
Move by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Better. Any discussion?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 10, consider adopting resolution number 22-04-30 approving the purchase of parcel That is approximately 64 acres for a total of $707,840 for the construction of a south end bridge.
I'll move.
Move by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
By Mr. Better. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President, or Vice President. I don't know what you did. Once we do this, I'm assuming that the vote is going to be for passage. I would like, I'm wondering if we need to have the discussion of annexing that land into the city as well, being as it's, it'd be city property.
The city has a number of properties outside of city limits that they currently own. You just have to meet the township or the county requirements. So, I would wait to annex until, you know, we have done a couple of the bridge studies and we move closer to the actual... Unless you want to annex everything in between those two properties, you know, but then the property would sit empty. So, my suggestion would be to not annex it at this time.
Well, I guess my point is maybe we should have a conversation about what we annex into the city, because we have a lot that is contiguous. I mean, all along the wet side of the Dyke, there's all city property, and if we want to do parkland or trails or anything over there...
Yes.
You know, it could be city property.
That is a discussion. Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
No.
Motion carries. Number 11, consider adopting resolution number 22-04-31 awarding the 2022 city project number five fire station roof replacement and library roof repairs to all-weather roof for a total project cost of $524,530.
Move.
Move by Mr. Helms?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson. Any discussion?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 12, consider adopting resolution number 22-04-32, setting the final hearing for the 2022 assessment job number one for street and utility improvements for Fifth Avenue Northwest and 20th Street Northwest for May 17, 2022.
Move.
Move by Mr. Helms?
Second.
Thank you by Mr. Larson. Any discussion?
Does everybody know what's going on with this? Okay, I don't know if you want to have a explainer so people can understand what's going on.
So, yeah, we have received bids, so the council is basically deciding at this point to move ahead with the final assessment hearing. And then, based on feedback that they receive at the assessment hearing, then they will decide at that time, so hopefully they'll decide on May 17, then, if we move forward with the project, you know, they would award the project, or they could reject the bids. So that's really the two options.
At that time, they can get up and express their views, correct?
Correct, yep.
And I guess just so everybody is aware, all that information was in the packet, and since we are setting the hearing, all that information will be mailed to all of the properties that would be affected by the project. So, our deadlines, that'll all be mailed out next week and start to be, it will be posting it, and it'll be in the papers starting on Wednesday of next week. So all of that information will be sent out to all property owners.
Is that a public bid opening?
Yes. What's that?
It's already been opened.
Yep.
Yep, the bids were open and the bid tabulation was in the packet. So if you want to look at them, all that information is in the packet. Nope, that's a packet that's available online. That was information provided for this meeting. I can give you a copy of it once we're done.
If you go on the city website also, it's by date, so it'd be the packet for today's meeting. And just scroll down, it's like a million pages. Just scroll down to this item, and it'll show per property how it would break out. Good.
Packages are posted every Friday for the following meeting, or for the Tuesday, the next Tuesday. So every Friday, a packet goes out. So...
And it's on the website?
Correct. It's on the city website.
Is the contract on the website?
All the bid tabulation, yes.
I understand the bid tabulation, what's in the contract. Does it explain in fact, or give you the example? He drives an access to your property.
I guess that's a...
No, that's, I mean, that's something, you know, we could discuss, you know, maybe the night of the final assessment hearing, but in the bid package, we did look at phasing the project, basically in two separate phases, you know, to try to minimize, you know, the distance from your house to where you may have to park and stuff. So, we have tried to take that into account during the preparation plans.
How big a length are you going to do at a time?
Probably looking at splitting the project into about, again, two phases, you know, kind of splitting it in half the best we could.
Do you adapt the street one, then, and one to do it, and half to do it?
No, we would, we would have to do the entire street, you know, at one time, so, you know, there's going to be a portion of the project where, like I said, you're going to have to, you know, probably walk to your home park and walk. On adjacent streets. I mean, if you have specific questions, I'm in my office from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Please come in. I will show you exactly how we have it phased.
Was that bid opening public? Because I didn't hear anything about it in our last meeting. I wasn't sure if I'd be able to...
It was a public bid opening.
Was that advertised? Because I didn't hear anything about it.
Yes, it was advertised.
I'm going to say for the record one more time that this is your street, and we want to carry out your preference on your street. Just know that. We went ahead with this next phase of getting these prices, because up to then, all we had was an engineer's estimate, but now we have hard numbers and a solid bid from a contractor, several contractors, all good reputable contractors. So, we're at that juncture where you all can make an informed choice about whether you want this, right? This is your street, and we carry out your preference on your street. That's our commitment. Maybe not everybody's on board with that. I think they are, and there's room for interpretation. You know, somebody will say, "We're not going to do a street that won't hold up for a very long time, and so the only thing we can do is a full replacement." So even those folks are looking out for you. And then the one who says, "Maybe there's a way to contain the cost, but it will cost you more every year that you own it," and some of you are saying, "That's great. That's what I want. I want the lower front-end cost with the cost of ownership being a bit higher." So that's an honest difference of viewpoint, and both of those would be to say, "We want what you want. We want to do this to your preference." Please know that.
We had Tiger Contracting, thought it would fold in.
Op?
Nope, op, but we had Stratic Corporation.
Zaveral.
Zaveral.
And Zaveral, yes, thank you. Tiger Contracting.
What's the cross section?
What's that?
What's the street cross section?
It is seven inches of concrete, 10 inches of gravel base with GeoGrid fabric and drain tile.
Thank you. Just be assured tonight that this vote, all this vote is, is to open the final hearing on the 17th. This is not saying tonight that we're, this is a done deal. It's not. It's just to open the hearing. So, please understand that, that, and that's the process that's got to be done, I guess. So, so then, what it's saying is on the May 17th is the night that you'd want to be sure and be here, so.
And go ahead, and you probably know, when you open a PDF, do you just print off the pages you want, right? This is 100 and some page PDF, just open to the pages you want, stipulate the page you want to print, plus it'll be mailed to you, right, Megan? Yeah. But if you're eager to see it and you want to see it in hard copy, just open up the whole document, scroll to the pages, they're numbered, print the ones of what you want. Otherwise, we print 144 pages of a packet.
And please note, when you go on that city website, that everything is open to the public on there. A lot of people doesn't know what's there, but we try to inform people that it's there. So just please, you can go on that website anytime you want, any day you want, you can find out, hopefully, the answers to what you're looking for.
Or ask your grandkid. Or Ron Knuckleby.
Megan?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 13, consider adopting resolution 2204-33, accepting the report of feasibility and setting the improvement hearing for 2022 assessment job number two for street and utility improvements to Fourth Street Northeast for June 7, 2022.
Move.
Move by Mr. Helms?
Second.
Second by Mr. Larson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Megan?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 14, consider adopting resolution number 22-04-34, authorizing the preparation of plans and specifications for the installation of a HAWK system at the intersection of 13th Street Southeast and Biglin Road Southeast.
Move.
Second.
Move by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Larson. Any discussion?
Question?
Question?
Are you have a question? Is this going to be like a two-way or one direction, I guess, one plane, I guess, north-south? Or is it also going to encompass traffic, or pedestrian traffic going north and south?
It would be affecting traffic specifically on Biglin, going north and south. Nothing on the side street.
So just the one side of the one thing?
Correct.
Is, are HAWK systems able to handle all four quadrants of the...
No, I don't believe so. I mean, typically, you know, like we've even talked, I mean, you know, their typical installation has been more of the mid-block crossings.
We'd almost have to do a stoplight there to get all four involved here. Exactly.
And they have revised it of late to allow them at intersections?
They have revised that.
Not preferred by all?
Min dot wasn't, you know, necessarily in favor of that, and I kind of spelled that out, kind of the pros and cons of it. You know, as we get into the design, we may run into some more challenges, but...
It's going to be a huge upgrade for the safety of the kids, and it's available to us now.
I guess I would comment that I don't think it's going to be a huge upgrade. I think there might be some upgrade. I don't think the issue is how that visibility is. I mean, visibility is an issue, but the problem is that it's congested intersection, and it's not going to make it less congested. It's actually probably going to make it more congested. So I'm, I don't, I think it's maybe a false statement to say it's going to be huge benefit. Might add some benefit at some point in time. There's also, like I've said in the FAST, is we also tend with some of these improvements to give a false sense of security too, and I don't want to do that. I am in favor of going for it, because I think it does offer some benefit at a low cost, but I don't think it's going to help much over there. I actually think the traffic's going to get worse.
And just keep in mind that HAWK systems are not traffic control devices. They are for pedestrians, and they're not meant to address congestion or typically things like that. They are purely for pedestrian safety. You will find HAWK systems, while not at an intersection where it would be two public roads, I have seen them where they'd be on a public road similar to this, like Biglin, where it would be, you know, on one side or the other. Then you also have an entrance and an exit to a school or to a school properties, et cetera, and then another road in the opposite direction. So you see something similar. You just typically don't see them at like a true road intersection, but you do see them where it would be somewhere, somewhat of a four-way type of a connection. So to say that it, they do provide variances to them, is what they call it. It's not necessarily exception. It would be a variance to it based on the use, the amount of traffic, those types of things. So it's not unheard of to see it, you know, at a four-way intersection. It's just not typically with two public roads, so.
Right, and I guess my point is, is I just think that, yes, there is, you know, it's unsafe traveling east and west across Biglin, but I think that there's almost as much of a danger zone in those north-south crossings. If someone is going on the east side of Biglin, going to travel south and go to, you know, South, or the middle school, you know, they cut across there, they cut across, and then the same thing is people on the south side of Biglin or on Greenway will cut across, go north, and then go across. It doesn't protect those lanes or whatever at all. And I just, I've watched how kids use that intersection, and I, again, I think the best thing about it is it's going to be higher and a light, which will signal to slow down there, but it's not going to do anything for the visibility or, and in my opinion, like, people get frustrated if you watch that intersection in the morning. You'll watch two going from Greenway or 13th, they'll take, you know, conflicting left-handed turns, you know, in that same, and cut the, do the, for lack of a better term, the farmer turn, you know, where you cut the corner just to make it in, and they're, because people are dodging it, you know? So my point is, is if you want to improve safety there, fix the congestion problem there, and that will do wonders. So, but again, I'm for the, so.
And let's keep, let's keep working on the back connection between the two schools. That'll help a lot of that, too, whereas now they have to go in, come out, go in, come out. If we get that back street built between the two schools, that'll help the congestion that Mr. Demers is talking about.
Helms, Megan?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Plains, consider authorizing the city administrator clerk treasurer to issue payment of recommended bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Helms. Any discussion? Seeing none, Megan?
Reapel?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Against my better judgment, Mayor Gander.
Couple things real quick. State of the City this Thursday, 11:30 at the Civic Center. You can come on in without a ticket and sit up in the ring if you want to just come and watch the presentation. It's going to be, a lot of different folks have contributed to this. It's going to be interesting and informative, little bit of humor perhaps. And if you do want to come on in, I think the chamber could still get you the meal. If you want to get in touch with the chamber, 11:30 is the meal, and then noon is the program. Childcare Open House this Monday night, Monday night at the Spud Junior for everybody in the community, not just childcare providers now. Come on over to the Spud Junior to talk about and brainstorm, how do we do childcare better? Childcare Open House this Monday night, Monday night at the Spud Junior for everybody in the community, not just childcare providers now. Come on over to the Spud Junior to talk about and brainstorm, how do we do childcare better? Fill those 210 or so spots that we need, that we don't have childcare for, we're gonna try to brainstorm and get some of that figured out. Thanks. Oh, sorry.
Uh, the deadline for registration is June tomorrow, and the, uh, you can find a link on the website, on the city website, where you can contact us, help, we need some development, we're gonna file, and Warren Mike, Carter Anderson, can find you, we can all give you a link.
You're serving a meal there?
Yes.
Yeah, come on, have a meal.
Have a date.
Thanks, that's it.
Mr. Better?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Uh, just one comment, I see, uh, they broke some ground and digging some footings and stuff up on the north end today, that's exciting, so, another business coming in, so, it's good to see some action going, so...
Absolutely.
Just another thing the mayor failed to tell ya, is he volunteered the council to serve the meal on...
State of the City.
Never asked, as usual.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson?
Wear gloves. I, uh, just wanted to reach out to our public, uh, employees, you know, like, this